Good evening, the regular meeting of the Independent School District 279 School Board is called to order at 6:00 PM on June 20th, 2023. This regular business meeting of the Ossio School Board is being conducted in the boardroom of the Educational Service Center. The meeting can be monitored electronically by streaming online from the district website. An archived recording of tonight's meeting will also be available on the district website. Seated in front of you this evening, from my left and your right are Director Sarah Mitchell, Director Thomas Brooks, Director Tanya Simons, myself, Jackie Moscata Jones, Director Heather Douglas, and Director Tamara Grady. Also present in the boardroom is Superintendent Corey McIntyre, and Cabinet members Laurel Anderson, Brian Severson Hall, not really, just kidding, Anthony Paternos, Steve Fisk, and Brian Bass. Cabinet members will come to the boardroom as needed for agenda items. Those of you who can, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Director Mitchell, will you please lead us? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members, are there any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda presented?
So moved.
Moved by Heather Douglas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sarah Mitchell. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six, passes six to zero. The next standing agenda item is recognitions, and we have no recognitions this evening. The next agenda item is audience opportunity to address the school board. I want to make sure that we are clear that on our agenda tonight, we have the consent agenda, we have an action item for our budget, and an action item for the long-term facilities maintenance plan, and the final action item is gifts to the district. I will read the guidelines for coming to speak. During audience opportunity to address the school board, I will call on each speaker who has submitted a speaker card. We ask that speakers keep their comments to three minutes or less. The board does not take action or discuss matters during this portion of the meeting. Speakers may be referred to the superintendent or staff of follow-up as necessary. The complete guidelines for public participation are provided on the meeting materials table and on the school board section of the district website. When I call your name, please come to the microphone and state your name, your topic, and also state whether or not you are a district resident. I have several speaker cards here today, and it's going, typically we allow 30 minutes or less for that, but we will be going about 45 minutes by my estimation. So please, if you are called to speak, keep it as brief as possible. We, just a reminder that we're not addressing the, the audience, you're addressing the board. And I will call the first one, and also the order that I call, our parents first, employees second, district residents last. Deb Spratt. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Deb Spratt, and my topic is teacher statement. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am a resident of Maple Grove, and I'm sharing a letter on behalf of an Ossio Schools elementary staff member. This spring, I was required to attend a department training called Creating Gender-Inclusive Schools. The training began with a statement made by a staff member that included the statement, "No matter what the pushback, we are not going back," regarding the gender inclusion approach in our district. Some of the things that were presented by the Welcoming Schools Group included the following. We were instructed to discuss our definition of gender. I immediately felt uncomfortable because I had a feeling that if I gave the definition of gender that I agree with, I would be labeled as judgmental because the first agreement given for the meeting that night was to replace judgment with curiosity. There would be no time for me to explain further that I care about everyone, even when I disagree with their belief system. We were given the definition of gender according to this speaker. Gender is determined by time and space, boy, girl, a blend of both, or neither, none of which were based on biology. A statement was also made that because of white supremacy, gender expansiveness has been suppressed. But now, because of the media, students feel free to express themselves. Hearing the mindset that exists at the upper level of our school district showed me that as a staff member, I am being pressured to teach concepts in direct conflict with my beliefs, which are not in alignment with that perspective of gender. Most concerning from this presentation was the depiction of a gender snow person. The head represents gender identity, what you know yourself to be. The middle represents sexual orientation, whom you love or are attracted to. The speaker said that for our youngest learners, we can use the words romantically attracted to if the word sexual is going to be a problem. And that even preschoolers know the difference between love for a mom or dad and love for someone else. The bottom of the snow person represents the sex assigned at birth, boy, girl, or intersex. It was stated that all of these are non-binary. He also said, yes, we are going to talk about this with young students. This is disturbing to be talking about romantic relationships with kids who are as young as preschool, not what the schools are intended for. The next topic was pronouns. The presenter started by telling us that some people are now using all the pronouns. We were told that this is not a big deal, that students feel safer at school than at home. He referenced a Google form that students could complete, where they would indicate the pronouns and name that they want to be called at school, and the pronoun or name to use with their parents. Is this allowed without parents' knowledge? Regardless, is it now our job to keep secrets? Why are we undermining the family and the influence of parents and/or guardians? Thank you.
John Gap.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is John Gap, and I'm a Maple Grove resident and an Ossio School dad, sharing the second half of the letter previously read from a district member. We were told that using our pronouns makes us a safe person, and we should ask, what pronouns do you use? What happens if, as a staff member, choose not to include my pronouns in email or introductions? Or do not agree with asking students this question? We were told we need to become fluent in this, in speaking the language of talking about kids of all genders because here in our school, everyone gets to tell their own story. Is this really true? Do we all get to tell our story? Do I have the freedom to, without repercussions, to discuss my personal views with students and staff in the school? I don't think so. I wonder about the people we serve in our schools who hold non-judgment care and concern for all people, yet will not affirm these beliefs. I wonder how many students will feel like I do, uncomfortable speaking up because our views of gender and sexuality do not fit this new definition. As a staff member, I am being told that if we do not affirm these choices, we are labeled as hateful and judgmental. This presentation truly impacted me in a negative way. Not only does the content come into direct conflict with my personal beliefs, but I am also concerned about the damage it will have on children in our schools. What about the families' trust in us when they send their kids to school? In my opinion, elementary teachers should model and teach what it means to be respectful, kind, a good student, and a good friend. We should teach how to get along with one another and work together as a team. We care deeply about the well-being of each and every student, and are tasked with teaching a solid foundation of reading, writing, and math. It is a complex job that does not need the added burden of discussing gender and sexual identity. In addition, why should children be exposed to these ideas at a young age from someone other than their parents? Even our family life curriculum has an opt-out option. Where's the opt-out option for the items described in the LGBTQIA+ History and Culture Resolution? I am baffled why Ossio area district, or Ossio area schools is putting significant time and resources into this topic. Approximately 50% of our students are not proficient in reading, and the same is true for math. Our focus should be on improving instruction so that each and every student leaves our schools with reading, writing, and math skills they need to achieve their dreams. District leaders should be looking closely at the schools where our students are making aggressive growth in these areas and spend time and energy and money necessary to further these efforts rather than planning the next move to spread LGBTQIA+ messages. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Abdi Fatah Ali.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. And I'm here on behalf of the Brooklyn Park Exclamations Center and the Muslims in the Community. Hi, everyone. My name is Abdi Fatah Ali. And I know we have a very short time, so I'm gonna try my best to cut to the chase. We do not agree with the teachings of the LGBTQIA+ in schools. We believe that the importance of schools is for them to learn about important things like STEM, you know, STEAM now, I believe it's called. If you open this door one time for this to be taught in school, what happens later is you allow for more things to come because the tolerance level certainly grows. What does that mean? I'm gonna be a little bit more explicit in what I'm trying to say. Really, what it is, is that if you allow this to open up now, tomorrow when someone comes in and wants to talk about their sexual orientation regarding incest, bestiality, or anything else, you have to open that door for them to speak as well. And if you feel puzzled in the moment, right now when I talk about these things, this, this is the same way folks felt 10, 20 years ago. And so 10, 20 years from now, I may have to sit or stand in this podium talking about the same topic, but regarding a different form of sexual orientation. My, I wanna share also that my wife is a teacher, and she's been a teacher for over a decade, or a little less than a decade. And so she understands, just as well as a lot of people in the community, that children spend about eight hours a day of their lives at school, five days a week. So they spend most of their time around their peers, around teachers. And so if they're being groomed differently than what is being taught in our belief system, then we, and we don't understand, and we don't, we don't have the room to compromise, or excuse me, to, you know, compartmentalize all of this, then our children will pick a different faith that we've been trying to instill in them. Muslims, for a very long time, have had a positive impact in the community. They've been able to practice their faith, but also provide support, provide intellect, provide certain things that can able, or push the, push the, the community forward. And unfortunately, if we don't have the ability to have our belief systems and stick by it, then that opens the door for us to have to compromise over and over again, which, which eventually dilutes our religion, and we cannot stand for that. As Muslims, we believe we are Muslims first, but we respect everyone. As an adult, you're allowed to practice whatever it is, but we're talking about children here. Children go to school, they spend their entire day there, and then they come home and don't even know how to, you know, communicate with their parents what's going on in school because the teacher has more of an influence than the parents do at some point. And that is very unfortunate because if, if the teacher's teaching them what we expect them to teach them, then we're all good. But if we go beyond that and they have an agenda to teach them something else, then now we have an issue where, where the kids come home and they believe in something differently. I wish I had more time to speak, but I just wanna leave it at that.
Erica Foster.
Good evening. My name is Erica Foster. I'm a resident of the school district and mother of district students. I'm here to address the LGBTQIA+ Resolution and its implementation. I don't expect the school system to reflect or teach my personal beliefs, but I do expect school to be a neutral, safe place for my kids and those of other backgrounds to learn. The resolution has jeopardized that environment in our schools. The resolution dictates that June must be celebrated by all schools as Pride Month. The LGBTQIA+ community is a group of people that are grouped together because of their sexual identity and how they view themselves. As such, there needs to be an opt-out option provided for the topics of gender identity and sexuality lessons. If we have put parameters around how and when students have conversations about sexuality in our sex ed classes, see Policy 643, then the district needs to follow its own rules and not discuss Pride Month with students younger than third grade at the very least, and create tracks that are consistent with Policy 643. Pride Month should come with an opt-out opportunity similar to what is given for sexual education. The acronym itself stands for Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, Intersex, Asexual, and Other. The majority of those terms are tied to sexual attraction preferences, which means this is a sexuality topic and should be left out of school curriculum pedagogy. If you integrate this content into everyday lessons, you will be infringing on the rights of students and families that disagree. The resolution states that LGBTQ Culture and History Month shall be designated as a month outside of June. If we add that up with Pride Month, that's approximately six weeks dedicated to these topics in the schools. I take issue with the Culture and History Month because of the content, the time required to include it in lessons, and that no opt-out plan has been mentioned. I've been told by my school leadership that this content will be integrated into class lessons so that parents cannot opt their children out of the content. This is unacceptable, as it is a conversation around sexuality, and schools must create an opt-out option. The resolution states that the Progress Pride Flag will be flown, raised on June 1 in celebration of Pride Month. That language led me to believe that it will be only flown for June. Now I have been told that it will be up year-round, which is out of line with what is stated in the resolution. Raising this flag shows a preference for one view, worldview over others. I would ask that you not raise it at all so that the schools remain a neutral place. But if we must fly the Pride Flag, I propose that the school district add the image of a heterosexual family to the flag in order to be truly inclusive of all sexual identities. Here's an example. I didn't use my good graphic skills here. The resolution is an egregious overstep of the school district into the private lives of families. Students belong to the individual family unit, not the school board or the district. The school district has no responsibility to shape the sexuality or sexual morality or gender of my children. Moral education isn't the role of the school system. It is the role of the family to create values, morals, and a belief system for our children. School staff should not be discussing children's sexual preferences with them, or vice versa. Yet this is what will happen if the resolution is enforced. School board and district staff, stay in your lane. Return to a focus on academic excellence. Do not force sexual conversations on my children.
Michelle Straight.
My name is Michelle Straight, and I'm a parent in the district. And I am speaking about the gender identity policy and the LGBT Resolution. I believe that any student who feels transgender should be treated with kindness and inclusion, love, and not hate. This doesn't change the fact that it is not appropriate for schools to teach children that gender identity is true and something to be promoted. I am resistant to teaching gender identity theory to my children as I believe it could lead them to irreversible injury due to puberty blockers, cross-sex hormones, and surgery. Many European countries have restricted these for minors as they have come to believe there is not adequate data to support their use. Based upon the LGBT+ Resolution passed last year, the district plans to continue implementing gender identity theory into everyday lessons for all grades. This is not acceptable, as schools should be a place that is impartial to specific belief systems. Instead, the district is creating a culture in which there will be no room for dissent on these topics without students being accused of creating harm. What do these topics have to do with teaching our children the skills they need to work and live? Why are these not topics for families to discuss at home as they see fit? It should be adequate at our schools to recognize that there are people who hold beliefs that are different than ours and believe that they have the right to do so, without imposing those beliefs on everyone. But it seems that acceptance of difference is no longer enough. Now everyone is expected to join in and demonstrate allegiance to other people's personal beliefs, at least when it comes to these topics. Boundaries based upon well-understood differences in physical bodies and not thoughts in people's heads are what allows everyone to coexist without taking away rights from any group. The challenge with implementing gender identity theory into policy is that gender identity is based upon how people want to express themselves, which should not be our primary concern when it comes to sex-based rights and spaces. Right now, based upon school policy, there are male students in female restrooms and locker rooms, and vice versa. This is being done without most students and parents' knowledge or consent. For females specifically, same-sex spaces are critical to safeguarding. Removing these boundaries puts pressure on our daughters to accept the presence of men in their spaces, to keep their mouths shut about any feelings of discomfort, and to avoid doing anything that would be construed as judging someone who might identify as transgender. This is not a fair thing to ask of them. Are teachers and coaches who are male but identify as women allowed in my daughter's locker room? What about overnight chaperone trips? Based upon the district's interpretation of gender versus sex, I can only assume so. These viewpoints and questions are not fear-mongering. These are real situations that our children are being exposed to as a consequence of implementing gender identity theory into our schools. Is the school board willing to involve parents in these far-reaching decisions? Or are you going to continue planning to exclude us? Thank you.
I, I appreciate that you're applauding for people that you agree with. It's taking a long time for each time to do that, so can we wait till everyone's finished? I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you. Mark Brenner.
Members of the school board, my name is Mark Brenner, and I'm the parent of two elementary students in the district. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Since the passing of the LGBTQIA+ Resolution last June, I've been in communication with the superintendent, the school board, the district-level president, and the principal of my children's school. I've sought to understand why parents and stakeholders were given such a small window of opportunity to respond to this resolution, and how I could get involved now that the resolution was passed. Most of these conversations led to pat answers that didn't address my concerns and only turned me to the next person in line, who also did not have a response to my concerns. I came to understand that there was a big breakdown in communication of this resolution through the district. Overall, my concerns were continually followed with inaction. Anyone, regardless of their views on the resolution, should be concerned about how the school board and the district have chosen to communicate in this way. It shows a lack of transparency and a desire to elevate certain voices and groups over others, which will not benefit the district as a whole. Most importantly, the resolution displays that the school board and district fail to understand the most important aspect of a student's education, their parents. It's the parents' right to delegate their responsibility to the district to educate their children. Instead, the school board and district seem more focused on indoctrinating their children in an ideology rather than educating them. This ideology, the ideology of this resolution only seeks to highlight the social and cultural nature of LGBTQIA+ community, and not the moral nature of it. This ideology should not be normalized within the schools in the same way the district has chosen not to normalize other topics in the schools. It would be better for the district to be consistent with their policies. Nonetheless, it is our responsibility as parents to teach our children on the moral and cultural nature of sex, sexual orientation, and gender identity. This is not a responsibility that should be delegated to the school board or the school district. On a personal note, my brother is a homosexual person and desires to have a relationship with his nephews and niece. My wife and I want that as well, yet it is our responsibility to guide our children through that relationship as they come to understand who they are and who their uncle is. With this resolution and its planned adoption into an elementary school setting, the school district has interposed themselves in the intimate conversations that we are having with our children as they engage in this relationship. The district has forced the timing of our conversations to be much earlier than elementary students are equipped to understand. Again, this is not the district's responsibility as educators. Therefore, I respectfully ask you to rescind this resolution and follow the proper procedures of policy within the district to address the topics of concern raised in the resolution, in the whereas section, that encompass all students in the district, the value of individuals, bullying, equity, and a safe, welcoming, and inclusive learning environment. Thank you. Thank you.
Deb Otto.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Isle, who's not here, and Superintendent McIntyre. My name is Deb Otto, and I am a parent and resident in this district. I am here today to request a policy amendment, in specific, an amendment to the 441 policy. The 441 policy is written in alignment with the Children's Internet Protection Act as it relates to appropriate content. In order to be consistent across all media, I am requesting that the 441 policy be amended to include print. I am requesting this change be effective no later than August 31 in preparation for the 2023-2024 school year. Thank you for your time.
Brett Freyseth.
I am a district employee and have been for 14 years. So I come here to talk about the resolution as well. And I think what's important is we really need to remember to center the experiences of our students. We exist as a district to educate students whose families have decided to have their children attend our schools, and to support them to be able to learn in an environment where they feel safe. No student can learn if they fear for their personal safety. We are here to ensure their safety. Parents who send their child to schools also have the right to expect that when they send their child to school every day, they will be safe, respected, and able to learn. One year ago, our school board put that central belief into words by passing the LGBTQIA+ History and Culture Resolution. One year later, it is important to focus on how students' lives have been improved by this resolution, since it was the sole intent of such a resolution. It is not about adults, but the children in our district being able to learn. Students shared their experiences prior to passing the resolution, and where their lives in schools are now. So some of the things that they shared is how they left last school year prior to the passage of the resolution. Some of those areas fell in my conversations with them around physical safety, and it's important to remember that no student can learn if they fear for their physical safety. Chief among those was bullying. Physical bullying and verbal bullying. Slurs. So slurs based on their gender, their gender identity, their orientation. Getting harassed in the bathrooms. Making assumptions based on stereotypes. Many fights that have happened last year that involved queer students. Mental health, a direct connection to being able to focus on learning and long-term physical safety. Students felt that they can not be openly gay at school for fear of being outcast or rejected, feeling isolated from lack of visibility and support. So here's the bright side. So in the past year, this is what has improved for them. Staff is always willing to help. There are LGBTQ class options, and just knowing them exist gave hope to find a general community in their schools, using names and preferred pronouns, providing with groups that they can attend, making them feel somewhat safe in their environment, staff members having safe rooms and being respectful to them, and my friends with students of different identities. Just being able to talk about their thoughts and feelings is a factor for how they feel supported. Thank you.
My name is Susan Lopez. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a district resident, very recently former parent. I've come in a spirit of deep love, and I have come to notice how we are living in an age where everyone chooses their truth. And just to comment on, just a little thing here, there has been, we want to respect everyone where they're at. However, there has been a 4,000% increase in the gender confusion. And while we want to respect everyone where they're at, that is being caused by introducing it into their lives at such a young age. And children are so malleable, innocent, curious, and trusting. And when we tell them that they can be another gender, when we tell them that they can decide their gender, that's something that's not even on their radar at that moment, when they're so young. I was a tomboy when I was little. If somebody had told me I could have been a boy, you know, gosh, you like running around, climbing trees, getting dirty, playing with cars? You might just be a boy. I would be fascinated with the idea of the possibility of becoming a boy. What do I know when I'm five years old? What do I know when I'm six, seven, eight? If a little boy loves ballet, or loves to sing, or is theatrical, expressive, and some teacher whom he trusts tells him that he can go and be, you know, maybe he's a female gender, and what's to hold back? There's a 4,000 increase. There used to be 0.02% that identified as transgender, but in service that they've taken, it's gone up to 9%. This isn't just happening naturally. It's happening because it's been indoctrinated. But what I wanted to say is, we live in an age where everyone chooses their truth, putting pronouns on the lapels, but there does exist absolute truth. It's not just anyone's truth. And absolute truth is not a concept. Absolute truth is a person. His name is Jesus Christ. He declared, "I am the way, the truth, and the life. No one comes to the Father but through Me." He wasn't crucified for his miracles. He wasn't crucified for his teachings. He was crucified because he claimed to be God. And that is a historical fact, proven over and over again. Gospel of Luke, he's a medical doctor. He's respected among secular historians. He wrote his gospel based on the eyewitness accounts of people who were still alive when his gospel began to circulate. That's just one of the arguments. But Jesus Christ is alive. Jesus said, that God said that He would judge us on account of how we respond to Him. He has given us the freedom to speak. He has given us the freedom to respond to Him as we choose. That is our freedom. But we also are held to count to our response to Him. And I'm here to say, out of love, don't disregard the words of Jesus Christ. He said, "I am the absolute truth." Let us judge our lives according to His words. Thank you very much.
I'm a resident of Maple Grove. Both of my kids went to K-12 in the district and got great educations here. One is now a teacher at Park Center. I want to thank the school board for taking the important step in 2022 of allowing our students to celebrate Pride Month throughout the district. Oseo Schools' longer-term policies of celebrating Black History Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, Indigenous Peoples' Day, and now, under the new policy, for Asian-American and Pacific Islander-American Heritage Month, all send a message to all of our students that they matter. This type of outreach and recognition is critical to an effective learning environment. Kids learn best when they feel safe, and they feel heard. The Pride flag in the front of this room says, "You matter, we care, you are safe here," to all our LGBTQ students. The seemingly warp-speed changes in our education landscape over the last decades, driven by diversity and teaching technologies, can be breathtaking. Today, a teacher looks out on a sea of fresh faces on our kids who have heritages from all over the world. And they all want the same thing, and that is to learn and to thrive. But that will only happen if they feel that they belong. That's why all these celebrations of diversity, which may feel superfluous to some, are critical to the mission of education, and especially critical to some, like Pride Month is, to LGBTQ students. All they are asking for is our respect for and embrace of who they are. And celebrating Pride Month does exactly that. In closing, please remember what they teach all of us: love is love. Thank you.
Dr. Rita Cortez.
Thank you very much. I'll be speaking on behalf of my wife, Dr. Cortez. So my name is Ghul, and I'm originally from Pakistan, raised as a Muslim, still am, practicing Muslim. And when I first came to America almost 40 years ago, I had the experience to meet gay people, transgender people, all different types of people. And so it was kind of a little bit different in a sense that, you know, they were different people. But I got along with them really well. I mean, they were all very nice people. And it was Portland State where I went, and there was a lot of gay parades and other thing happen. So people lived together, but sexuality did not become an issue. So in schools, you know, when we have issues related to creationism, and issues related to Darwinism, and all these kind of things, there are controversies that come up, because some people feel one way, other people feel the other way. But I personally think that we can respect each other. We have a person who spoke before me, mentioned about, you know, we can feel pride about this thing, we can feel safe about being in school for everyone. But sexuality never was the issue for schools. In schools, we never discuss sexuality. Sexuality itself is something that needs to come with maturity. So when the kids are of a certain age, they can determine themselves what they want to be. We cannot impose or indoctrinate children. Like I said, I grew up in Portland, Oregon. It was a place where everybody was there. So it was, I mean, I never felt discriminating anybody or whatever. We had a great argument between, you know, all different genders. But it was not about sexuality. It was about, you know, as a human being, how they felt. So we need to keep our children out of this discussion, especially the school board needs to get out of this business of pushing a certain agenda, just like the creationism and Darwinism and all these isms. This seems like another ism. So we need to keep these isms out of that, and we need to leave the sexuality to the people. Let the kids decide on their own what they want to be. And that should be at an appropriate age, but not at a young age. Thank you.
My name is Adrian Jackson. I'm speaking on behalf of the Brooklyn Park Massage, and also as a resident in this We're exposing our children to LGBTQIA+, and if I missed a letter, don't feel no disrespect, and to sexual orientations. And it's putting us as Muslims, as parents, as leaders in this community, in a tough spot, because now we're working on damage control. In the Massages and the churches, we teach our kids one way, and these kids are spending numerous amount of time within the school board, and they're learning one thing, and then you go home and you learn another. And there is some confrontation there that we don't fully agree with. And as Muslims, we're not here to impose our will or to impose our religion on one another. A person accepts Islam for what they believe in. We can't do that. They're not a true Muslim if they don't accept that. But if they go to school and they learn about these sexual orientations that doesn't meet the criteria that is biologically correct, a man becomes a woman, six months later he becomes a man again. And now, my siblings are coming home, and they're like, you know, why, Adrian, why is a person that was named Karen last week named Josh today, and unable to use the same bathroom as me? That's not correct, and that's not moral, and that's not sane, and that's not safe, because you identify as a man, and you come back as a woman, you're biologically, it was never removed. So this is not, we're supposed to leave the education and the school system a neutral spot for kids to learn about math, science, reading, but not about sexual orientation. Leave that to the parents. And these kids are, as a, your brain mentally cultivates the things that is repeatedly said to you. And if I'm telling my son, who has genitals, that you're a man, and you go to school, and you're learning about, oh, you could become a female, that doesn't coincide to what I'm teaching them at home. And just to speak into the future, I have a one-year-old daughter, and this is very scary, because I'm not sure what the future holds for her. And I can't send my kid to a public school where we're supposed to be learning about math and reading, the normal things, that she's going to grow up and be a man, because, oh, my teacher said so, or this person here is going to identify as a man tomorrow. So I'm not in favor of this agenda that's being pushed to our children. And as many of us here, we're not in favor of that. And let's leave that type of conversations and those topics to the parents at home. And yeah, let's leave it there. Thank you.
I would like to first say thank you so much. I think Erica has done an outstanding job, and she has said better than what I would say. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was our last speaker. Our next agenda item is the superintendent's report. Superintendent McIntyre?
Excuse me. I did not have a speaker card for me. I did. I turned it in, and she had it.
What's your name?
Natalie Sonic. I was here to speak about books, and I was one of the first.
I apologize. I'm going to look through here. I'm pretty sure I saw your name. Thank you for speaking up. Yes, I must have accidentally flipped it too soon. I'm sorry, Natalie. Go ahead.
Thank you.
I first wanted to let you know that I'm a resident here of Maple Grove. I do have additional handouts. As soon as these get passed out, I'll start. I had an opportunity, as I said, my name is Natalie Sonic. I'm a resident of Maple Grove.
So it's not your belief?
I have two daughters who have been attending Maple Grove High School. I'm here representing many voices of the parents who share my concern of finding highly sexually graphic and sexually violent books in our Maple Grove High School library. I brought an example of the book that you're seeing in front of you. It's called Fun Home. It's written by Alison Bastell. The book is a graphic novel. As you can see, the first page that Linda's showing you here is a person giving oral sex to another individual. If you look at the top, you can see a woman's breast fully being exposed. The additional content that I'm showing you, that I have also in handouts, show an individual between another individual's legs saying- our students, but as you can see, I was wrong. This is a clear example of the need for parents to be involved in their child's education, for parents to do their own research, for parents to not assume anything and to ask questions, and to start having a voice that represents our children. This is why parents do not trust our schools, this is why parents do not trust our school board, is because things like this are being implemented in our schools without our knowledge, and it needs to stop. Maple Grove High School has 2,300 students, a very small percentage of which are 18 years of age. This and other books like this do not belong in the hands of minors. This is not about book banning, I want to make that very, very clear. This is about making sure that the books in our school libraries are age-appropriate. In my research, I was able to locate Minnesota statutes that is called harmful to minor laws. It makes it illegal for minors to have access to sexually explicit material. The statute is 617293. It says, "Any picture, photograph, drawing, or sculpture that has an image of a person, human body, or depicts nudity or sexual contact, any book, pamphlet, magazine, or printed matter which contains sexually explicit sexual excitement, sexual conduct, is considered to be harmful to minors." This book, and I reviewed ten total, and you can take a look, I would love for you to take a look at them, are inappropriate. They're not meant for minors, and they need to be removed. Thank you.
I don't think I did. All right. Our next agenda item is the superintendent's report. Superintendent McIntyre, you're on for sure this time.
Thank you, Chairman Lasky Jones. I'm glad you were able to catch all the cards. Good evening, board members. Regular part of the superintendent's report is to share our points of pride in our district. As we finished the school year, there was many, many points of pride to share, as we had graduations recently and a number of other celebrations. So our point of pride is to take time to recognize and celebrate our students, our staff, and our community members who are contributing to the accomplishment of our mission, which is to inspire and prepare each and every scholar with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning. So tonight, I have asked, as a normal process, to have members of our district cabinet here to share a number of examples over the last few weeks as we wrapped up the school year. And with us tonight, Laurel Anderson, Executive Director of Human Resources, Steve Fisk, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Schools, Brian Bass, Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Achievement, and Anthony Paternos, Executive Director of Technology, who will get us started this evening. So thank you, team.
In the area of achieving dreams, congratulations to Oseo Area Learning Center class of 2023. Find that, find the thing that makes you fulfilled and then use it to help other people. Staff Speaker Zach Baer encouraged graduates at their commencement ceremony. Use empathy, altruism, selflessness, be curious, and challenge yourself. It's your turn to use these skills to help other people because you've got them and you always did. Congratulations to Oseo Education Center graduates. Thirty-one scholars met their graduation plans, achieved their IEP goals, and required transition activities through the last school year. The staff at OEC are very proud of the graduates who worked hard coming out of the COVID years to get back out into the community to paid job and volunteer sites, said Patrick Kleimer, Student Services Coordinator. They have put in one to three years beyond their traditional high school to hone their independent, functional, and employability skills to prepare to live their best post-secondary lives. Congratulations to the Adult Basic Education class of 2023. Twenty-eight graduates received their GED or Adult Diploma. Never lose your thirst for knowledge, for it is through that that we celebrate a world that is better for future generations, Superintendent McIntyre told the graduates. Congratulations to 279 Online class of 2023. Fifty-nine students received their diploma this morning in the second-ever 279 Online graduation commencement. Get bold, stay passionate, and go set the world on fire, Staff Speaker Stephanie Winfield told the graduates. Meet Park Center Senior High class of 2023. Congratulations to these scholars on this accomplishment. Remember this moment right here and be proud of all you have accomplished, Crystal Lee, Senior Class Cabinet President and Student Speaker, told her peers. The Oseo Senior High class of 2023 has officially graduated. This class received over $14.5 million in scholarships, the most awarded to a senior class in the history of Oseo Senior High. Treat every day as a new learning experience, Student Speaker Maggie Olber said. Don't be afraid of failure. Congratulations to the Maple Grove Senior High class of 2023. These scholars completed 1,183 advanced placement exams this year in 20 different subject areas. We continue to rise and overcome because positive growth often comes from adverse changes, Student Speaker Temple Landry said.
Graduates of Oseo Area Schools, Senior High Schools took a walk down memory lane the last week of school when district elementary schools hosted senior walkthroughs to celebrate their former students. Maple Grove Senior School graduate Stavia Aurora found great success in her last year of high school thanks to years of hard work, perseverance, and dedication in her educational journey. Aurora was recently named the U.S. Presidential Scholar and National Merit Scholarship winner. Scholars in Ann Mack's sixth-grade class at Oseo Middle School were recently visited by the snowplow they named Blizzo during the Minnesota Department of Transportation Name a Snowplow Contest last winter. Students at the Oseo Area Learning Center competed in the Minnesota Association of Alternative Programs, or MAAP, Stars competition. Eight OALC scholars traveled to Mankato for the statewide alternative school competition in life skills, teamwork, and academics. Recently, it was state tournament season for Minnesota State High School League events, and Oseo Area Schools, Senior High Schools, had several teams competing in state-level competitions. Here's a few highlights. The Oseo Orioles adapted softball, CI and PI teams, representing all three schools, competed in the state tournaments. The Maple Grove Senior High School Girls softball took third in the 2023 State Class 4A Tournament. The Maple Grove Senior High School Girls golf team placed first in the Class 3A State Tournament. Junior Amelia Morton placed third overall. The Maple Grove Senior High School Boys Golf Team placed second in the Class 3A State Tournament. Ryan Stendall placed fifth overall. Maple Grove Senior High Senior Jordan Borsch placed first in the Girls 100-meter-class 3A, first in the Girls 200-meter-class 3A, first in the Girls 400-meter-class 3A, and was named the 2023 Miss Track and Field Award. Congratulations to all athletes that competed in state tournaments this spring. Eight schools in the district are being recognized for sustaining Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, or PBIS, for the 2022-2023 school year. Oseo Area Schools was additionally selected as a sustaining exemplar district with 28 PBIS schools or programs in the district. Maple Grove Middle School hosted an eighth-grade end-of-the-year celebration, sending their scholars off to high school.
In the area of contributing to community, scholars at Park Center High School participated in a tree planting to celebrate the end of the school year. In the area of lifelong learning, Early Childhood and Family Education, or EC and FE, hosted their annual spring social on the evening of May 17th at Willow Lane Elementary Childhood Center. Families with children ages birth through five gather to participate in fun activities. Juneteenth, June 19th officially became a federal holiday on June 17, 2021, but the day is one of the oldest celebrations of freedom in the U.S. On this day in 1865, federal troops arrived in Galveston, Texas to ensure that all enslaved people be freed. The day is also celebrated as Freedom Day or Jubilee Day. Oseo Area Schools scholars, staff, and community members gathered for a celebration, including food, dance, and speakers. Oseo Area School recognizes Pride Month in June each year. At Park Center Senior High School, the Prism Club celebrated Pride Month during their last meeting. The Prism Club is made up of staff and scholars and meets weekly to talk in a circle, discuss what is going on in their lives, support each other, and socialize together. At their final meeting, the club celebrated Pride Month with rainbow floats made with ice cream and a variety of sodas. In elementary schools across the district, scholars celebrated the end of the school year by participating in egg drops. You can see quite a few of them. Garden City Elementary School scholars got an extra incentive to read this summer when they each received a surprise Build-A-Bear reading buddy and pack of books on May 26th. Scholars at Zane Wood Community Steam School spent close to 600 hours on science, technology, engineering, art, and math programming this school year, and they showed off the fruits of their labor with a steam fest. The recent warm weather may make last winter's Toy for Tots drive feel like a distant memory, but its impact is still being felt at Northview Middle School, where a donation of over 700 books from the Marine Toys for Tots Foundation has recently hit the school's library and media center shelves. Fair Oaks Elementary School celebrated scholars' hard work and growth during trimester three with a Super Kids Day event.
Scholars at Rice Lake Elementary School recently participated in a fun run. Scholars in all grades participated in the event, which took place on a beautiful day in May. A group of students and educators from the Treaty Education Alliance from Fort Qua Appell, Saskatchewan, Canada, visited Oseo Area Schools District Office on May 25th. 279 Online's PBIS scholar team, known as the Otter Club, put together another in-person event for secondary scholars in grades six through eight. They hosted a dance event called Neon Night, where scholars could participate in a school dance, make a craft, enjoy snacks, and meet new friends. Twice a week this spring, Park Brook Elementary School's grounds bustled with activity after school, as over 160 scholars participated in the school's afternoon boot camp. Weaver Lake STEM School hosted an All About Corn Assembly for Kindergarteners and second graders on May 30th. Scholars enjoyed learning about the big role corn plays in our world, and each received a bag or, received a bag or corn merch. Scholars from Park Center Senior High School's Community-Based Vocational Assessment and Training, or CBVAT, program, and College and Career Readiness Class, visited Medtronic's Brooklyn Park location to learn more about the facility and career opportunities that exist within this industry-leading medical device manufacturing organization. In the area of mission-driven employees, Adam Lipti has served as a Reading Core Literacy tutor for four years at Basswood Elementary School. In his final year of eligibility as a tutor, Lipti continues to help scholars improve their reading skills and become confident learners. Lipti said, "I wanted to serve something beyond myself." Gretchen Dullinger has worked for Oseo Area Schools in early childhood education since 2001, starting as an early childhood education teacher before becoming the Early Childhood and Family Education Program Assistant at Willow Lane Early Childhood Center in 2012. "I loved teaching, and in this job, I get to support teachers," Dullinger said. You can learn more about Dullinger in our latest staff spotlight on our district website.
All right, board members, so just a couple of quick announcements, and I have some additional comments for you. Oseo Area Schools will provide free meals to children through the federally-funded Summer Food Service Program through, now through August 18th. So NHL 18 years of age or younger may participate, and all meals must be consumed on-site during the allotted times for each site. We have the list of locations and times on our website at district279.org/summermeals. It was a busy spring, and just want to take a moment to thank all of our scholars, their families, and staff, and hope they have, really take some time and have a safe and happy summer. And lastly, tonight's my last board meeting with all of you as superintendent of Oseo Area Schools. That's a different, definitely a range of emotions, bittersweet for sure, and I wanted to just take a moment to express my gratitude and reflect on really the remarkable journey. Someone said, you know, the last four years, you really get seven years of credit for each year because we went through a pandemic. So I guess I've been here 28 years now. So many things I'm proud of that I've worked with the board on, and our staff, and our communities. So there's too many to name them all, but I did want to point out just a few remarkable things in my mind. I just wanted to first acknowledge the remarkable talent and gifted brilliance of our scholars and the accomplishments our scholars have continued to show us through just challenge after challenge. Witnessing their progress and their knowledge and skill always gives me the energy to continue to push through hard things. And this is really a testament, I think I was mentioning to one of, a couple of you, we don't do anything alone in this job and in our district. It really takes all of us to have success. And that just really is a testament to the hard work and dedication of every employee in the district and all of you as board members, our community, our families. And I deeply appreciate and value each and every one of you on the board for your continued tireless efforts. When I joined in July of 2019, who knew we were going to step into some of the things we had to deal with? And that, those first few months, I wouldn't have expected the challenges brought forward by COVID-19 and the pandemic and everything that came with it, our entire community, our state, and all our country and the world, from our youngest learners to our most seasoned staff, though they continued to demonstrate resilience and adaptability. And I'm immensely proud of our staff, our students, our families, not only how they cope, but really thrived in many ways during these trying times. And I'll never think of the word pivot ever the same way again because we used it a lot, but we did create and implemented a strong COVID preparedness plan. We really tried hard to use a decision-making process to help us navigate through what seemed at times really impossible decisions. And I know you all felt it as board members as well. But we really did work through all those things, doing our best to keep our scholars first, their health and well-being at the center, and also trying to keep the district in a really solid position to be able to move into the future. You never lost sight of your efforts on the strategic plan, even though it took us longer to get there, we did get it done. And that really is the roadmap to achieve our mission, one scholar at a time, to continue to make sound decisions that benefits our scholars and their families for years to come. I'm also proud of our work to successfully, you know, get the secured funding we need and needed to move forward through the Building of Better Future Phase One Operating Referendum. That really sets us up for the next 10 years to continue to invest in the day-to-day learning and growth. We also have the opportunity to now invest in our buildings coming up in the fall. So I know you join me in sharing that gratitude and appreciation for the support from our community to invest in those, in our scholars in those ways during honestly hard economic times right now. But that really does help us amplify the But that really does help us amplify the efforts for education interventions, classroom support, mental health, safe schools, just a long list. Just a few other kind of shortlisted things during the four years I was here, created an online school. Remember, we had five thousand kids in our virtual academy at one point? That was probably the biggest high school in the state at one point. Establishing a new district and department and site operational plans and vision cards, so a structure and a system to really help with continuous improvement. We invested in, with your support, improved multi-tiered systems of support to really address the academic and mental health needs of our scholars. At the time, we called it a burst of service, and we were able to sustain that and continue it beyond the two-year window that we initially thought we would have. We added, in addition to Rice Lake Elementary, right when I started, we were able to invest that in that additional learning space, which really has become the model of what we aspire to across the district when it comes to flexible learning spaces. In partnership with the city of Brooklyn Park, we added the Brooklyn Park Dome at Park Center Senior High, and you remember how challenging that was? Now that has just become a hallmark for space for a variety of things, soccer, football, lacrosse, baseball, softball, batting cages, it's a walking track in the winter months, just a tremendous asset to the community and to the district. You know, through the pandemic, our community education program was decimated, but with your support, we have been able to rebuild that and bring that back and provide those services to our community. I'm proud of our work to try to do a better job honoring our tribal nation sovereignty and to really provide safe and welcoming environments, free of bullying, free of bullying and harassment to all of our scholars, and especially with our Indian education program. We implemented a new district-wide communications plan. That was a big deal. How do we continue to communicate to our community, to our, to our staff? I'm also proud of the Instructional Leadership Academy with our team to really improve the leadership capacity of our principals, to really achieve greater academic results in our schools. We added student school board reps. We added a curriculum instruction assessment committee. We had a legislative action committee. We added student recognitions at board meetings. So just a few things that in a very short period of time, we were able to accomplish, and I'll just mention that through all of that, and you all bring a different perspective to the board table, right? But we've worked hard together, we've worked smart as we knew how, even through very difficult challenging, sometimes feeling impossible topics. And we get, we've tried to do that together, which gives me a peace of mind, I guess, that we've done everything we can do to be right by our scholars, their families, and the staff in our district. So I'll wrap up by just saying, as I move on to a different chapter in my career, I really have the full confidence that all of you as the board and our district are in highly capable hands of Dr. Kim Heil, our new incoming superintendent, and she's already very familiar with our communities, our district, will hit the ground running, and having served in multiple roles in the district, we already know her passion for students, the dedication that she has for getting to all of our scholars to their highest potential. I know she'll work seamlessly with all of you, and we'll start here in the next couple of weeks. So I'll just wrap up by saying I'm extremely grateful and appreciative for the tremendous opportunity and honor to lead this dynamic and visionary school district. Serving in this role's been one of the greatest honors of my career, so thank you. We'll give it back to you, Chair. Moskita Jones.
Thank you, Cory. I appreciate those words. We will be responding to that after our board reports, so we can get those out of the way, and then.
No response needed.
And then respond. Director Mitchell, do you have any board reports?
Yeah, just a brief committee meetings. I'm learning we have a lot of different committees in this district. The CPAC Committee, so that's the Community Education Program Advisory Council, we were just in here on Thursday night, and per the most recent legislative session, there was an increase in the community, community education revenue from five dollars and forty-two cents per capita to six dollars and thirty-five cents per capita. And what was fascinating to me, that's the first time in seventeen years that there's been an increase. So that was encouraging, and one just kind of fun fact with that committee, there is one community member who has been serving on that committee for twenty years, and I thought that made such an impression on me, and just want to encourage parents to get involved, and we want to hear your voice and perspective on these committees, so thank you.
Director Books.
No committee reports.
Yes, I have the Two Seventy Nine Foundation Board report. I was not able to attend, however, the topics that were covered included the financial review, it included a review of the different grants that are given. So for those who don't know the work of this board, it's the Two Seventy Nine Foundation Board that gathers funds from the community, puts on a lot of events, the foundation evening, and coming up in October is the Five K Race, so encourage everybody to participate in that. And then it provides grants out across the district for unique and differential experiences, kind of above and beyond the curriculum, and it's really a critical avenue for our scholars to have access to things that they may not have access to otherwise. And the foundation also added three new trustees to the board as well, so that's a report on the foundation.
Thank you. Director Douglas.
I don't have any reports, but I just wanted to mention to parents, community members, basically anybody who has an interest in what's happening in the school board, is sometimes it might seem like our meetings are very cut and dry when we're at a regular board meeting or a general board meeting like this, but our work sessions are where we really talk about the details, and those are not recorded or video recorded, so if you want to know what's going on in those meetings, please come to those in person. They're also on Tuesdays at six P.M., but sometimes they're at school sites throughout the district.
They are audio recorded.
But not video, yeah. Thank you, though.
Absolutely. Director Grady.
I just want to say Happy Pride Month to all of our LGBTQIA+ scholars, families, and staff. You deserve to be seen, you deserve to be heard, you deserve to be celebrated for living your authentic life, because no scholar can unleash their brilliance while trying to be or being forced to be something they're not. Because the truth is that celebrating Pride Month isn't just about meeting the needs of some scholars.
Point of Order, these are committee reports, not our personal updates.
I would like to continue, if you will allow that.
Is this the report on attending the Prism meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Pride Month, Point of Order, is Prism meeting a committee?
I understand that argument, however, many people have reported on other events that they've attended in the past during committee reports.
I'm also on the LGBTQIA+ Advisory Committee, if that satisfies your recommendation and your concerns.
Not really.
Not really, so it's a process order rather than a content? If you will allow me, I will start again. Happy Pride Month to our LGBTQIA+ scholars, families, and staff. You deserve to be seen, heard, and celebrated for living your authentic life, because no scholar can unleash their brilliance while trying to be something that they're not. The truth is that celebrating Pride Month isn't just about meeting the needs of some scholars. Pride Month is about meeting the needs of all scholars. Research shows that inclusive practices benefit LGBTQ students as well as heterosexual students. In fact, heterosexual students see more significant benefits in some risk categories. Sadly, the reverse is also true. Restrictive LGBTQ policies and practices negatively impact heterosexual students as well. With policies like the gender inclusion policy and the LGBTQIA+ History and Culture Resolution, all students experience less emotional distress, less violence and harassment, less suicidal thoughts and behaviors, and the more policies and practices a school implements, the better the student health outcomes. I am so proud of the work that we have done together to make Osseo Area Schools a leader in student support, because Osseo Area Schools knows that diversity is our strength. Happy Pride Month to all.
Just to clarify, that wasn't a update on a committee?
Noted. My board, my committee reports are, I have three reports. Lost my train of thought? Thank you. Two eighty-seven. In two eighty-seven, we had financial updates and an update on the strategic plan. The uber goal for the superintendent is to develop the strategic plan, and then also there is a policy committee, committee that is going to be meeting starting tomorrow for that. For Northwest Suburban Integration School District, the, we're saying goodbye to the director tomorrow night at that meeting, and we went over financials again, it was time to look over budgets for the upcoming audits in both of those organizations, and we also looked at the updated numbers for the magnet schools. I want to encourage anyone who's listening to check out our magnet schools, they're pretty amazing schools. We have some schools that have waiting lists and some schools that do not, and I have visited each of these schools, and they're all phenomenal schools. And then Kayak got canceled, so that's all my board reports. However, I want to take this time to recognize Cory for his time here in Osseo Area Schools.
Twenty-eight years, Jackie.
Those are dog years, right?
Yeah, just wait. Just wait. Everyone will have a chance to say something to you. I'll just start it off. I wanted to first thank you for coming to Osseo Area Schools and leading us through some of the most challenging times in education. Our scholars and family have been blessed to have your compassion and your calm presence to navigate multiple challenges throughout the last five years. You've seen many board members come and go in your tenure. Throughout it all, you maintained excellent communication and, more importantly, true care for our well-being. You're always willing to provide any information that would help us make good decisions. On behalf of the board and the community, I want to thank you for your years of service. I know sometimes it felt like fifty, and I know sometimes it felt like five months. Under your leadership, we have accomplished many things of which you listed, and if I listed them here, we would be here all night, right? But I'm going to mention a few. Together with your leadership, we developed and implemented a strong strategic plan with community engagement that has gone further than any I've seen in the past in Osseo Area Schools. You've increased communication, including faster translation, so that we can truly reach more families. You strengthened our safety and emergency protocols through a comprehensive approach. I appreciate that. You worked closely with the Minnesota State High School League to create racial harm protocols, and then charged our leadership to create an amazing identity harm protocol. You started us on a path using scorecards for our strategic plan that will hold us accountable, the last of which will be presented tonight, and you prioritized a multi-tiered system of support, which included curriculum adoption, more mental health supports, and evaluation of how we are serving our scholars with special needs, and much more. You prioritized equity work and reorganized the Equity Department to put it front and center of all of our work, because you know that each and every scholar needs to feel welcomed. I'm sure I'm missing some big things, you mentioned a few of them. It has been quite a whirlwind. Thank you. I want to thank you for always doing better when we know better and for doing hard things. Finally, personally, I've been through so many really hard things in my personal life the last few years and during our time together, and you've given me grace every step of the way to deal with those things and non-judgment. I appreciate that about you. It has been a true honor to serve with you. You will be greatly missed. Thank you.
Should we go in order here? Okay. And Cory, I just want to thank you for welcoming me to the board and the onboarding. I felt like we were just getting started working together, and you called me to tell me you're, you know, interviewing elsewhere, but thank you for welcoming me, and one of the things you've left with me is it's a phrase of yours, but I also believe you live it out of finding the common ground with other people within the district, and that's our hope that that will even increase as we move forward and you and your new roles, so I wish you the best of luck.
Yeah, thanks, Sarah.
Superintendent, thank you for your service and wishing you all the best in Anoka Hennepin.
Superintendent McIntyre, Cory, it has been an honor to serve on this board and to work with you. It's been a true honor just to know you, and when you first came to us, this was your first superintendent job, and it has been amazing. I don't think anyone would have ever imagined that this was your first superintendent role, and now you're moving on to the largest district in the state, which is a testament to all that you have accomplished here. And for those publicly watching and in the audience, Cory is too humble to ever say this, but he is well-recognized in the community among superintendents, and people reach out to Superintendent McIntyre for guidance, for input, for consultation, because of the leader that you are, not just your accomplishments, but because of your servant leadership and your heart for the district. Superintendent McIntyre has led us with data and systems, but with heart and with the understanding of how those decisions, how this board's decisions, impact every scholar in the district. And I know that he has, every single day, taken the responsibility of every student's education in this district to his heart. Every single one of our twenty thousand students, I know, have been on your mind throughout this entire time. Now it's going to be double. But you really are a leader of integrity, and I've greatly appreciated knowing you, our time, working together, the different meetings that we've had. I'm going to miss meeting at Fat Nats for our one-on-one touchpoints, but I want to thank you and make sure to also thank his family. Thank you to your wife, and thank you to your children for the sacrifice that you've made, for the many, many hours away from them and here in the district focused on the needs of the students here and the families of this district. You just have been a shining light for this district through the different issues and circumstances that we faced over the past years. You focused on shared goals, and you've always brought everybody around you to that focus of shared goals and mission. Through the tireless years of working through our strategic plan, you kept the work going with the board, and that's, we're here today because of your work on that. And I'll just close it again, it has been an honor to know you and to work with you, and I'm lucky because I live in Brooklyn Park, and a part of Brooklyn Park is in Anoka Hennepin, so I'm sure I will get to see you a lot as well. But I just want you to know that I'm a better person for having known you. I'm a better board member, and I'm a better leader in the work that I do professionally as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Doc.
Boy, I really don't know how to load that up. Anything I could think of to say is there, right? No, seriously, though, Cory, you have been just incredible to work with, and having the opportunity to hire you as a board member was really incredible. It's a process that unfortunately I've done too many times, but you normally don't get to do that often, and from that first interaction, when we, when we first started interviewing you, everything that you said you were going to do and that you wanted to do in this district, you have done above and beyond, and that is absolutely astonishing, especially considering the circumstances. You were brand-new to our district when the state shut down for COVID, and that was not only unprecedented as a district, as a state, a world, right? But we had to do some massive shifting during that timeframe, at the same time as you're just getting to know the staff and the board members in our community. That's a feat that I feel like not very many people would have been able to accomplish what you did in that time, and I'm just honored that you were here with us through that and that you helped us navigate through all of those challenges and all of the other things that we've come across. As a board, we've experienced a lot of different issues coming to our district, a lot of changes within our district, growth, not necessarily bad changes, but just new things that we have to do differently. Our world is ever-changing, and I really appreciate how you have helped navigate that and really provided guidance and direction, both to us as board members, but to the staff as well, and how to do this work professionally, respectfully, and with everybody's best interest in mind. So I just want to say thank you for everything that you've done. So I just want to say thank you for everything that you've done here, and I know that you're going to continue that work and we'll probably call you a few times just to get some advice. But it's been incredible working with you.
Superintendent McIntyre. Superintendent McIntyre knows that leadership is about listening, doing a lot of listening. But it's not just about listening and meeting folks in the middle. Leadership is about listening and leading with the heart, leading with evidence-based research. And again, leading with the heart, leading with what he knows is best for our Oseo students, our families, our staff, and the entire district. And I thank you for that leadership because going out for what is right, for what is best for everybody, takes real courage. And I just really wish you and the Anoka-Hennepin District the best. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Anoka-Hennepin is very lucky to give you.
Right next door.
And I do want to add once again, Anoka-Hennepin is one of the largest districts in the state, and it's often the Anoka-Hennepin superintendent that the media goes to to ask questions about things that are going on in education. And I'm really proud that Cory will be pretty much representing the state on what's going on in education. So I appreciate that. Moving on to our presentation of our strategic Direction A initiatives, as I referred to earlier, our presentation this evening is the Monitoring Report for Strategic A Initiative. Information will be shared by Brian Bass, Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Achievement, and Robin Gonzalez, Director of Leading and Achievement. While they're queuing that up, we did discuss this quite a bit at our work session a couple weeks ago or a week ago. I'm not sure. Time is weird.
Yeah, two weeks ago. And the board members, as you do, you're planning the summer with Dr. Heil. We've at least mapped out the same rhythm for next year. So about every other month, you'll come back to that. And if you decide to change that rhythm up, you can. But just to try to, it's really built around when the data is available to us throughout the course of the year. So it's just not once. It's you're kind of always had an eye on the data throughout the year.
Just a reminder that these scorecards are our baseline for improvement in the education of our scholars. Wish the audience was crowded now. This is exciting stuff. I'm just saying.
No pressure, Brian.
So, good evening, Chair Moskata-Jones, members of the board, Superintendent McIntyre. It is exciting to be presenting our fifth and final vision card for our strategic directions this evening. Want to also acknowledge you all for your encouragement, your support and feedback throughout each of these cards, your questions, and your input and perspective have been valuable as we've sought to refine each of them as we wrap up each round. We, you did acknowledge that several weeks ago, we did go in greater detail with the report and answering a lot of questions related to the data that's presented. We are going to seek to be high-level this evening and bottom-line it. And then there are a few that are just, there's just detail there that we have to, we've got to provide a little bit more perspective, but we'll do our best to keep it moving. So our presentation outcomes for this evening, school board members will receive information on baseline data for the high-priority initiatives for Strategic Direction A and will understand the alignment of the operational plan, the district's operational plan, to the vision card data collection. We use vision cards to make visible critical data points to support and assess progress toward achieving the strategic directions in order to positively impact the desired daily experience for our scholars, our staff, and our families. Vision cards measure the district's success in achieving the strategic directions. Here we see an excerpt from our district three-year operational plan. It includes the row four strategic direction A. You'll see learning work items and implementation work items. There are three in each of those categories. In learning work, we have Build a Better Future Phase Two, our LGBTQI plus history and culture resolution, and then our identity-based harm protocol. It says racial harm, but we have since expanded that to include identity-based harm response. In implementation work, we have three items located there. Build a Better Future Phase One, which we approved in November with the voters, 279 Online Phase Three, and then multi-tiered systems of support focusing on the social and emotional learning, the comprehensive supports and services, and supporting scholars in crisis. So vision card A reads, create safe, welcoming, and inclusive learning environments that foster global curiosity, belonging, innovation, and engagement. You'll see there are five indicators for this strategic direction. PBIS implementation review, classroom environment, climate equity review, bullying, harassment, and student safety, and our last one, belonging, help, and trusting adults. As we have talked about throughout our work with the vision cards this year, the data that we collect at the district level is satellite data. This high-level data helps us identify patterns and trends, and we understand that we need to be able to dig down into the map and street-level data to understand the root causes of some of the disparities that we observe in our district and to help inform the program changes we need to make. The data that we share with you tonight is also shared with our site leaders so that they can look at the more granular data, looking at the map and street-level data. All right, so our first indicator, PBIS implementation review. So the tiered fidelity inventory, which is the metric that we're using, is a process indicator. It is used to determine the degree to which school staff are implementing the core features of positive behavior intervention and support, PBIS. This instrument is administered three times each school year by a team from each site and includes three sections. Tier one are universal features, tier two are targeted features, and tier three are intensive features. For this vision card indicator, we are using tiered fidelity inventory total ratio, or TFI total ratio, as a primary measure with a benchmark set at 60%. This was based on four reasons. First, all of the components of the TFI count in the results. Second, this reflects the research-based methodology behind PBIS. Third, these results will be meaningful, manageable, and sustainable for reporting. And lastly, the benchmark will be reasonable and yet challenging because it represents the top 30% of all TFI's administered in Oseo in the year 2022, 2023. The district's TFI total ratio increased 13% from 2019 to 2021 and has been at or above the 60% benchmark for two of the past three years. On the vision card, the result for 2022 was established as baseline last year, and this year was the first year we have reported these results to the board. In this chart, we provide the TFI total ratio scores for tier one in blue, tier two in yellow or gold, and tier three gray. And we've also included site type for the 2022, 2023 school year. So you'll see elementary, high school, middle school. The other sites include our Oseo Area Learning Center, 279 Online, our Oseo Education Center, Willow Lane, and Arbor Lakes. When we look at this slide, I'm like, okay, so what's significant here? So what's significant here in the TFI is that our sites self-report and self-assess themselves, right? And so there are features that they're assessing themselves in each of those three tiers. And you'll see that there's a lot of confidence in their implementation of tier one and tier two and not as many features in tier three. And as we look at this, we're like, hmm, what are the critical features that have the highest leverage for interrupting some of the disparities or some of the disproportionality that we see in behavior? So we come away from this chart really thinking about more questions, having more questions than answers, and we look forward to digging into that data next year. Our second indicator, classroom environment, is an outcome indicator, including two measures, behavior incidents and out-of-school suspensions. Behavior incidents and suspensions are both calculated for all students enrolled at any time during the school year at the secondary level for grades six through 12. The percentages listed on the vision card refer to the percentage of student groups meeting or exceeding the goal. All right, so big chart here. We've got six grades, right? Grades six through 12. We have the subgroups, right, below them. And then we have total across the bottom. So just to reiterate that. So as we consider the reporting years for vision cards, we have complete data for two school years in which school was in-person for the entire year and preliminary results for the current school year. In order to address the historical over-representation of some groups, on each of these measures, we are looking at the number of incidents and suspensions divided by the number of students enrolled. After reviewing the data for the two most recent years when we were fully in-person, we set benchmarks of less than one behavior incident and less than a tenth for suspension per student per year. The data table highlights groups that met this benchmark in green and provide the percentage of groups meeting the benchmark in the bottom row. From this analysis, we can see that the following groups have met the behavior incident benchmark for the past two years and are on track to meet the benchmark for the current year. Grades six and seven through 12, Asian, Hispanic, white, female, and the total across all students. We can also see that the following groups have met the suspensions benchmark for the past two years and are on track to meet the benchmark for the current year. Grades 10 through 12, Asian, Hawaiian Pacific Islander, white, and female. As we look at the trends in the percent of groups meeting the benchmark, the percent meeting the behavior incident benchmark has increased 35% from 2019 to 2022, while the percent meeting the suspensions benchmark has decreased 10%. As we look more closely, we can see that all of the groups that were not meeting the suspensions benchmark in 2019 also did not meet the benchmark in 2022, while one group, grade six, that met the benchmark in 2019, did not meet the benchmark in 2022. This time, I will pass it over to Robin to finish the next three indicators.
Good evening. Two data sources were used for the climate equity review indicator. The first, the Equometric Scales, are groups of related questions from the Equimetric Survey. Equimetrics is a pulse survey that Oseo Area School conducts annually to assess how the district rates in the areas of diversity, equity, inclusion, and cultural competency. The survey consists of nine scales, but for this indicator, we focused on three: diversity, equity, and inclusion. In 2022, a total of 2,112 out of 3,014 staff members completed the survey for a response rate of 70%. To each question, staff responded on a scale of one to 10. In this survey, a response of nine or 10 indicates they strongly agree. A response of seven or eight indicates they agree, and a response of one to six indicates that they strongly disagree or are neutral. It is important to note that a response would need to be seven or higher to be included in the agree or strongly agree category. This sets a higher bar for agreement than the typical four- or five-point scale, but allows for more granularity when examining responses because survey responses tend to skew positively. The second data source for this indicator is the staff stakeholder survey. This indicator includes two scales or groups of questions and one individual question from the survey. The survey is typically administered in the winter of each year. It was administered in 2019, 20, school year before the pandemic-related school closures, but the survey was not administered in 2020, 21 due to the pandemic. For each question, teachers could respond strongly agree, agree, neutral, disagree, strongly disagree, or not applicable. For scales, we use the average score with strongly agree five, agree four, and going down. And for questions, we use the percent responding strongly agree or agreed. Taking a deeper look at the Equimetric Scales and items, we can see that overall in 2022, the scale that had the highest rate of agreement was the inclusion scale at 61.5%. The two questions that contributed most to the overall percentages were, in my organization, people are included regardless of background or experience at 64.5%, and I have a person or group that is a source of support or advocacy in my organization at 63.5%. The next highest scale was the diversity scale at 57.9. The two questions that contributed most to the overall percentage were, my organization actively promotes diversity with 66.3% agreeing, and my organization seeks diversity in our hiring practices with 62.9% agreeing. The third scale, equity, had an agreement rate of 55.3% overall. The statement that made the largest positive contribution in this scale overall percentage was, my organization creates equal access to resources for underrepresented populations at 60.3%. To report data from the stakeholder survey, we focused on scale averages for staff groups and developed color coding to highlight differences between the groups, with green being above average and gold being below average. We can see the staff groups with the most positive perceptions overall worked in early childhood sites, adult sites, or district-level staff. We can also see that our Asian and Black staff indicated that they felt more safe this year than in the past years, while our white staff indicated that they felt less safe than in the past years. Indicator A4, which is bullying, harassment, and student safety. The first data source for this indicator is from the Minnesota Student Survey. As a reminder, this is a survey that is administered every three years to grades five, eight, nine, and 11. The numbers that are reported are index scores that allow us to capture all response types from the favorable responses to the not-so-favorable ones. For the bullying and harassment portion, the closer we get to an index score of 8.0 means close to 100% of our students answering are saying that they are never victims or perpetrators of bullying and harassment. For safety, the closer we get to a score of 7.5, the closer we get to 100% of our students answering that they feel safe at school. For bullying and harassment, we saw a slight increase from 2019 to 2022 with index scores of 7.6 to 7.7. For students' sense of safety at school, there was a decrease from 2019 to 2022 with index scores from 5.9 to 5.4. In the monitoring report, you'll find more details about the specific survey questions that were used in the analysis and trend data broken down by grade level and gender from 2016, 2019, and 2022. Future reporting will include data broken down by racial groups once MDE makes this data available. District data along with state data were used for benchmarking. Results from our district and that of the states were both very similar in the two categories and throughout the three years that are being reported. For the bullying and harassment category, our district's data and the state's data repeatedly had index scores that were nearly 8.0. Again, that talks about it's getting close to 100% of our students responding, that they never feel as if they're victims or perpetrators of bullying and harassment. The last indicator on, or the last data source for this indicator is a placeholder, and it's for the Stop It incidents reporting. Stop It is a new platform in our district that allows individuals to anonymously report safety misconduct or compliance concerns. Future iterations of this, for this strategic direction, for the vision card that represents the strategic direction, will report incidents and potentially other metrics from Stop It once we have a full year's worth of data to look at. The student stakeholder and family stakeholder surveys are the two data sources. The student stakeholder and family stakeholder surveys are the two data sources aligned to the indicator of belonging, health, and trusting adults. The student stakeholder survey has been administered to students in grades three through 12 in the district beginning in 2015, and this indicator includes four scales from this survey. The numbers reflect the percentage of students responding yes, always, or mostly yes for each question on each scale. The student stakeholder survey was not administered during the 2020-21 school year due to the pandemic. From 2015 to 2023, the largest increase was in the classroom respect scale, especially questions about teachers listening carefully and students' behavior meeting teacher expectations. Over this period, students' perceptions of belonging decreased by 2.6% overall, including a 4.6 drop in the question, I feel like, I feel like I belong at school. The second data source is the family stakeholder survey. Safe, welcoming, and inclusive learning environment scale. This survey was conducted in the spring of 2021, 22. A randomly stratified sample of families with children enrolled in the district was used, and 949 families responded. The same calculation steps were used here as in previous vision cards when we talked about the family stakeholder survey. So what we reported on are the averages within group, or the averages within groups are calculated, and the median across the groups is what's reported on. This is, the reason we did this is to prevent heavily weighting specific groups who had larger numbers of people responding. Here we can see that based on this survey scale, 76% of the respondents selected often or always when considering the items within the scale. This busy table provides the scale results by student group for the past four years. The annual median across all student groups is used on the card. In order to see the differences and trends for each group, the four-year median was used to establish color coding with green indicating 2% or more above the four-year median and gold representing 2% or more below the, below the four-year median. In this table, we can see that white students consistently had above-average percentages in all four scales, while male students had higher percentages each year on all scales except trusting adults. Students receiving services for special education were higher than average all four years in the help scale. On the other hand, Black students indicated lower-than-average percentages on belonging, help, and trusting adults. American Indian students and students receiving free or reduced-price meals had lower-than-average perceptions of trusting adults all four years. On this slide are the safe, welcoming, and inclusive learning environment scale items from the family stakeholder survey. The items with the highest rate of positive responses were, school staff treat my scholar with respect at 89%, and my scholar experiences positive representation of their identity in their school environment at 83%. Dr. Bass will continue with next steps in lessons.
Thank you, Robin. So, we will, as we have with other cards, continue to select and sort data that closely aligns with the strategic direction and our high priority initiatives. We will continue to disaggregate data for all student groups. We will continue to seek out data from similar districts in order to ensure that we're making aggressive growth toward our goals. And then lastly, support sites in their use of map and street data so that programming and practices can be analyzed and monitored. Thank you. Questions?
Board members, anyone have any comments or questions?
I mean, we've already said that we talked about this in detail at the last work session. So I think more just comments than not questions at this point. I think, just for future presentations, I know we'll get these scorecards sort of on a rotating schedule annually. But I think what's missing for me for some of the, a lot of, most of these scorecards is a direct link to the strategies that we have in place to reduce some of these disparities and particularly target some of our growth goals. I know that we talk about some of those things in other discussions, in other areas, other topics, but specifically related to the scorecards. If there's some simple way to include how we're looking to directly improve some of these, some of these numbers, that would be helpful for me. I think that's all I have.
So as Director Book said, we study this in depth, and for those watching or in the public, you can access the materials from the work session, which has a lot more content to it, has a very thorough report as well. And we just, you know, continue to express the appreciation for, this is the first time we're doing it, we're getting all the metrics on one page, we need a baseline to start, and we continue to marry up all of the different pieces of the strategic plan, the operational plan, the improvement plans. So I feel like all of the pieces to the puzzle are starting to come together, and I'm looking forward to how it continues to evolve as we go forward.
Yes, I agree. This is really great work, and we, I feel like we've come a really long way. I don't have any specific questions or concerns about the information that was provided. I feel like we, like other board members have said, we've discussed this in depth and gone over it really thoroughly. One or two things that I am continuously hearing from staff and from parents within the community is feeling, teachers are feeling an inability to address student behaviors. So only when a student behavior rises to a level of being unsafe for the student or other students in the classroom, or it is significantly disrupting the classroom experience for other students, are they feeling able to respond to those behavior incidences. So many other behaviors that are less egregious are being left unresolved. I've personally talked to parents who are also frustrated about these things when they get to conferences and find out that their student is not engaged in class and they're playing video games all day, but because they're not being disruptive to the class, they're not being reprimanded. And so that's a great concern for parents. And then the other concern that we hear from parents a lot is, and obviously we cannot violate data privacy laws, but there is significant concern around, my child's being bullying and bullied and harassed, and when they go back to school the next day, the person who is causing this harm to my student is still there in the classroom. How do I protect my child? And so I guess what I'd like to see is a little bit more data about those types of incidences, and how can we better create safe and welcoming environments for students and for staff to be able to address behaviors that don't rise to the level of reporting in this particular document.
I would just add on to that, I think that one of the areas that we've talked about having more clarities around communication, and I think this has come up in a couple different work sessions about how do communications about disruptions in the classroom take place? How do parents become informed about an incident with their student or that their student experienced in the classroom? So I think there's some, definitely some pieces here that we've talked about in other work sessions that we're continuing to work through to address the concerns that we're hearing from parents.
I'd just say thank you again for your work on this. I really appreciate it. It's great to see this last vision card for future, because I don't want to play a gotcha question on it, but I'm interested to see how this will shift, or if at all, next year with a new law of nonexclusionary discipline reform, and see if that makes any difference, or maybe, maybe Osseo School District is already in alignment with that. So, something, something to look at later on. Thank you, both of you, all of you. I know it's a team effort.
I so appreciate, Brian, you brought up in our work session, and I'd like to see even greater communication toward teachers and staff that we are not penalizing them for reporting behavior incidents, and I appreciated hearing that from, you know, at district leadership that that's not something that teachers or staff are going to be penalized for reporting. We just want accurate reports, so thank you for that.
I just want to finish it off with, these scorecards are just a reflection of Cory's leadership and of Dr. Gonzalez and Dr. Bass's leadership in having a way to evaluate our students' daily lived experiences that aren't just MCA scores, which is a one-shot, one-time thing, and that other districts are interested in this, in the use of these. And so I just want to appreciate the innovation and hard work and the intention on which data pieces are we using to provide an accurate. And of course, it's, it's the beginning, and we'll change it as we go, right? When we know better, we'll do better. But I just wanted to say thank you for your leadership and all that.
And I just want to add to that, thank you for saying that. Brian, you and Robin, and Research and Assessment Team, and so many others, because I know you got a lot of input from many stakeholders, because the charge the board gave us was, how can we measure the highest priority initiatives or the strategies that are in our operational plan? So this is how we're measuring that operational plan. It's the first year, it's a starting point, we're going to bring data forward, you're going to give feedback, and how do we dial that in? I think, Director Grady, your comments are one that every district in the state's wrestling with. I think we're ahead of the curve here in, with, in Osseo because of our MTSS system. So I strongly encourage the board to continue to support and invest in those preventative measures and positive supports and strategies to really, you know, how do we teach the behavior we want, more than punishing the behavior we don't want, which doesn't change behavior. We all know that as parents, kind of, to some degree. So it's got to be a balanced approach. So we honor and enforce our policy, but we also try to prevent wherever we can, and there's going to be a number of changes that are coming. I think you got, the, Osseo has a lot of the framework pieces we need to just continue to build on that. So I give Brian and Robin and the team the credit for having the foresight around that as we've paid attention to the conversation happening, you know, at the, at the state level. So that's just my point, I just want to say thank you. It's been a constant project and piece of work all year since about this time last year. It's a great job.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much for the feedback.
Thank you. The next agenda item is the consent agenda, consent agenda, which includes some financial reports and acceptance of different grants. Is there any items that you would like to remove for separate consideration, board members? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
So moved.
Moved by Thomas Brooks. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tanya Simons. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. Motion passes six to zero. All right, first action item this morning, this evening, feels like it's been overnight already, is the 2023-2024 budget. Information will be shared by John Morsted, Executive Director of Finance and Operations, and Kelly Benusa, Director of Business Services, our amazing financial team. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to start off quickly by saying thank you to the entire team that's involved when we are putting together the budget. You're talking about more than 80 people from across the district that are collaborating and working to input to create this really long document that we put in front of you here today, but the point of doing that is for providing that detail and that transparency. So I just want to say thanks to all of them, and especially to the business services team led by Director Benusa and her team. So I'm going to just turn it over to Kelly, and we'll get rolling from there.
Good evening, Chair Mosquito Jones, Board Members, and Superintendent McIntyre. Tonight we bring forward for your consideration the fiscal year 2024 proposed budget. This budget by process design is directly linked to our strategic plan and provides resources necessary to support our strategic priority work. The long-range financial planning, or LRFP, process is very transparent and collaborative in its approach, and it incorporates several stops along the way to receive feedback and direction from the school board. The budget before you incorporates all the school board's input. We thank you for your attention to this work so that we can bring you forward a budget for which you are all well-prepared. Budget decisions are made using the long-range financial planning framework, which includes a financial forecasting model that provides the basis of our budget, planning for financial sustainability. Budget planning includes aligning our resources with the mission and strategic plan, an assessment of the impact of productivity and essential services, its impact on our work to ensure equitable student achievement and compliance with legal requirements. The school board engaged in several work sessions throughout the budget development process, and at the February 7th work session, the board carefully considered the budget recommendation. The LRFP advisory team's assessment of impact was provided to the board prior to action by the board at the February 21st school board meeting. Here's a summary of the LRFP framework. The framework provides coherence between our systems, strategic plan, the allocation of resources through the collaboration of budget managers, and it describes the direction provided by the school board. The LRFP process has been used in planning for the general transportation operating funds since fiscal year 2013, and for all other budgeted funds since fiscal year 2014. Budget planning, approval, and implementation is a continuous process. We follow a similar timeline every year. The boards met, set the budget targets at the November work session, which provided direction for staff in preparing the program efficiency abandonment redirection or parent directives that described needed adjustments to meet budget targets and complete the work on strategic investments. The levy was approved in December, and the pair summaries were approved by the school board in February. We then prepared the final budget, which reflects the board-approved budget adjustments. The budget presented is the same as the budget discussed at the June 6th work session. The budget is the culmination of this process, and will continue this process for next year's budget. Now we'll provide information regarding the fiscal year 25, 24 budgets, the budgets that will be adopted for all five funds presented on this slide. In this presentation, we'll provide detailed information about the general fund, because it makes up most of the overall budgets. Details of these budgets were discussed at that June 6th work session are included in the online materials. The fiscal year 24 general fund revenues are budgeted to increase 16.6% or 43.5 million compared to the fiscal year 23 revised budget. Areas of revenue change were as follows: the operating referendum increase of 18.3 million for voter-approved increase, growth in projected students, and increase in market valuations of property; special education revenue increase of 11.4 million mainly for cross-subsidy funded at 44% for fiscal year 24; general education aid increase of 8.9 million due to a 4% increase to the basic formula allowance, and a projected increase of 358 students; unemployment revenue increase of 1.5 million for tax shift adjustments, and then English learner or EL increases of 1.2 million for cross-subsidy and EL concentration; interest revenue increase 960,000; local optional revenue increase of 776,000 due to changes in the growth of projected students; equity revenue decrease of 365,000 along with other smaller increases for TRA pension adjustments, DSEG transportation, and alternative teacher compensation. The fiscal year 24 general fund expenditures are budgeted to increase 7.6% compared to the 23 revised budget. This is higher than the district trend of 3.5% and the board tactic of 3%. The budget tonight is $10.2 million more than previously projected, includes several large adjustments. The board approved the, on February 21st, the budget adjustments net increase of 1 million, which include a net zero LRFP budget adjustments, 1.2 million for enrollment alignment, and then a decrease of $200,000 for safe schools alignment. So the board approved the 23 mid-year budget adjustment with one-time savings of 1.4 million, which are now included in the 24 adopted budget. The net effect of the revenue expenditure budget variance on the proposed general fund budget results in an anticipated operating surplus of 15.6 million. The fiscal year 24 ending fund balance is projected to be 33.6% of the annual expenditures or 97.6 million. The proposed fund balance is higher by 9.8 million than was anticipated in February. The board policy recommends a minimum fund balance of 5%, which we are in compliance for with this budget. Next, we'll review the five-year financial projection for the general fund. This is the high-level visual organizer for the financial forecast that was shared at the June 6th work session. the June 6th work session. There are three sections to this projection. The top section shows the revenue expenditures, differences, fund balance, and fund balance percentage for a seven-year window that begins with our most recent audited financials for fiscal year 22, the current year revised budget, the proposed budget for '24, and then projections for '25 through '28. You typically see operational adjustments under the chart. This line is used to highlight any needed adjustments. The assumption section shows the revenue expenditure assumptions used in '25 through '28. The next section shows the budget projections for revenues in blue and expenditures in red. The trend lines of those same colors show the general trajectory of each of those items. As you can see, even with the legislative impact, the general formula allowance being tied to inflation now and the increased voter-approved operating referendum levy included in revenues, expenditures are still expected to outpace our revenues. The final section looks at the fund balance projection for that same time period. The green bar represents our actual and projected fund balances for each year. The orange bar shows the minimum required fund balance of 5%. Again, those trend lines show the trajectory of the fund balances related to the minimum. As you can see, we're projecting a fund balance in fiscal year '28 that exceeds the board-required minimum, and we're not planning any operational reductions through '28 at this time. So key factors included in the projection model are, starting in '24, Oseo's at their current operating referendum cap with inflation, which was voter-approved this past November. This means that we can't use the operating referendum as a lever to increase revenue to help us balance budget deficits in the future. For fiscal year '25, the budget will need to add back $9.7 million in expenditures that are currently being funded with S R $3. And then, starting in '25, our projected expenditure increases will start to outpace our projected revenue increases. This slide is a summary of all five fund budgets to be adopted for fiscal year '24. The general fund, which is shown in blue, was the fund we just discussed and is included in this for just comparison purposes. The Food and Nutrition Services Fund is the red column. The increase for revenues and expenditures is due to the implementation of the Free Schools for Meals for Kids program. Overall, the Food and Nutrition Fund balance is projected to decrease $860,000. The Community Service Fund is the green column. Overall, the Community Service Fund balance is projected to decrease $269,000. Revenues are increasing about $142,000 and expenditures are increasing $1.4 million. This increase in expenditures is due to a combination of items. We have anticipated participation increases in our school-age care, facility rentals, and adult and youth enrichment programs. We're increasing $300,000 of budget capacity for expenditures funded with federal funds in '23. We're adding back two program managers and one administrative ESP for $360,000, which were eliminated during the pandemic. And then, we're adding $90,000 for a community education communication specialist. The capital fund is the purple column. The capital fund revenue is projected to increase $1.6 million or 9.9% due to an increase in the voter-approved capital technology levy, which is partially offset by a decrease in operating capital and E-rate revenue. Expenditures increased by $691,000 or 3.5% for curriculum adoptions and materials. This change results in a planned reduction in the fund balance of $2.4 million. The final column is the Debt Service Fund in orange. The 21.5% decrease in revenue in the Debt Service Fund reflects the required levies for ongoing debt service payments, and then the 28.1% decrease in expenditures represents the required annual principal and interest payments for outstanding debt. The Debt Service Fund is projected to have a $4.6 million fund balance at the end of fiscal year '24. The action item tonight is the recommended adoption of the fiscal year '24 budgets for all funds. The adoption means that the budget was prepared in accordance with board direction. So if there are any questions?
First, let's entertain a motion, and then if there's any questions, we can ask. Is there a motion to accept the fiscal year '24 budget?
So moved.
Moved by Heather Douglas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Thomas Brooks. Any questions or discussion or comments for Kelly or John? I just want to reiterate, June 6th work session, amazing work by our financial team with detailed information on much of this budget, very clear and easy to understand. You know, get your favorite drink of choice, coffee or whatever, and read through it. It's pretty, it's pretty transparent. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think, given the awards and recognition that many of our departments receive, and especially the financial department, just speaks to all of the work that the entire team does. We appreciate it. And as Director Mosquita-Jones pointed out, the availability online, I also really think it's best in class that we have a very user-friendly report as well. That's really stakeholder-facing in addition to the detailed financials. I think that's really best in class amongst the districts. So thank you for the hard work by everybody, and I know it's crunch time. So thank you for the amount of hours that are put in during this period of time.
All right. Is there, oh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes six to zero. The budget is adopted. Our next action item is a 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan, and information will be shared by John Morsted, Executive Director of Finance and Operations, and Dale Carlstrom, Director of Facility and Transportation Operations.
All right. Right topic, we should be good. Thank you, Chair Mosquita-Jones. I'm going to basically do a second round of what I just did and start by saying thank you to Dale Carlstrom, the Director of Facilities and Transportation Operations, and his team for their tremendous work in presenting and pulling together all the information for the long-term facilities maintenance plan. We've had a lot of conversations around this with Build a Better Future, but I'm going to go ahead and let Dale kind of walk us through that process.
Well, good evening. Chair Mosquita-Jones, Directors, Superintendent McIntyre. Been great working with you. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you and the community our efforts to protect and restore the IST 279 Osceolaia Schools' facilities and the site assets. This evening, we will provide a brief summary of the long-term facility maintenance reporting process and update the board on the three-part LTFM process of planning, construction, and closeout. I'll discuss the closeout of the 2022-23, the construction startup of '23-'24 projects, and the planning for the 2024-25 work. The Minnesota Department of Education requires that we communicate a 10-year LTFM plan through the annual update that we will be discussing this evening. We are required to report detailed expenditures and revenue projections, as well as statements of assurance that the planned expenditures meet the deferred maintenance criteria for the long-term facility maintenance levy. The Finance and Facilities Operations Team worked closely with our professional consultants to establish a comprehensive assessment of facilities and site assets to inform our financing strategy for the 10-year plan. Before we get started with the details of the plan, I'd like to recognize our facility staff, our professional consultants, construction teams, and site staff for their commitment to revitalizing, restoring our facility assets to better serve our students and community. Our work is making a difference, and I'm proud of the progress we have made through the long-term facility maintenance program. Pictured here is the proposed 10-year LTFM expenditure plan that you'll find in your packet. This form is split into two parts, the health and safety category and the general site and facilities category. This year, we've a new category that tracks the expenditures for gender-neutral restroom projects. Other than that, it should be what you've seen in the past. Your packet also includes the revenue worksheet that tracks the LTFM general fund levy source. The bonding portion of the LTFM funding source is tracked separately. The third form is the statement of assurance certifying that the LTFM 10-year plan follows the criteria for health, safety projects, and the guidelines for long-term facility maintenance allowable expenditures. We maintain extensive records for our LTFM projects, and the projects' details are audited Since the start of the 10-year planning process in 2017, we've maintained the same strategy for keeping our annual expenditure level flat at a $25 to $30 million. The only significant changes that we've made from the original plan was to add additional capacity in our out years to keep up with anticipated inflation. Our new proposed 10-year plan includes funding for, in 2025 through '27, in coordinating efforts to combine deferred maintenance needs with the Building a Better Future II Facilities Improvement Initiative. This coordinated effort will ensure that our infrastructure and existing conditions keep pace with the proposed renovations. The 10-year total expenditures for health, safety have increased by 15% from the previous 10-year plan due to the work necessary to support the significant increases in health, safety-related projects. We have experienced significant inflation in health, safety project costs. An example of this is the fire alarm system replacement costs have increased by 50%. Our general construction costs have increased significantly across all categories, and our proposed 10-year plan has a 5% increase in facility portion of the plan. We intend to continue our facilities, our focus on district-wide categorical restorations such as heating, air conditioning, ventilation, paving, roofing, flooring, painting, and building envelope. Our LTFM Steering Committee will continue assessing the condition of our facility assets and establish priorities to inform this plan. We will continue our ongoing efforts to conserve energy with new lighting systems and efficient I'd like to quickly review the projects that we've wrapped up for the fiscal year 2023. Our current 10-year plan budgeted $24.8 million, and we will end the fiscal year budget with, on budget, with a total expenditure of $23.9 million. We completed the third phase of the renovations at Oseo Senior High with the restoration of the east wing. These efforts have positioned us well to address the Building a Better Future initiative for Oseo. At the end of, at the end of June, we will have, we will have completed the first phase of the extensive renovation of the five locker rooms at Park Center Senior High. We are pleased with the work so far, and the project is ahead of schedule. We completed the last of the work, so, last of the work for the mechanical restoration at Elm Creek and Rice Lake, and the facilities are ready for the Building a Better Future II plans for classroom renovations. We have completed the Phase 1 for the Palmer Lake restoration and are beginning Phase 2 of the project now. Last summer, we started the major restoration of the Oseo Senior High stadium with new turf, lights, visitor bleachers, and electric service. Our facilities team has completed 67 projects during the fiscal 2023, and we continued, we continued to work on the categorical projects to keep improvements of our facilities and Our total budget for fiscal 2024 is $23 million with an approximate $15 million budgeted for the major projects, $1.8 for health and safety projects, and $6.4 million for categorical projects. This fiscal, we're entering into Phase 1 of an $8.1 million project at Cedar Island Elementary, and we will be completing Phase 2 of the sister school, Palmer Lake Elementary. After completing these two projects, we will have renovated all the sister schools, Birch Grove, Fair Oaks, Palmer Lake, and Cedar Island. We intend to complete the restoration of Park Center's locker rooms and PE health classrooms by the end of November. We will finish out the restoration of Oseo Senior High stadium with the replacement of the home bleachers and the press box and have the stadium ready for fall sports in August. Park Center Senior High will have a stadium turf, the stadium turf replaced with this summer with, which will complete the turf replacement at all three high schools. The two remaining of their original classroom groups at Elm Creek and Rice Lake will be replaced over, over the summer. We will be replacing most of the mechanical equipment at Basswood Elementary as a first phase of the restoration of the mechanical in the sister schools Rush Creek, Edinburgh, Fernbrook, and Woodland. Weaver and Oakview have had these restorations already. FY 2025 marks the beginning of the accelerated LTFM plan and includes some extensive projects at Brooklyn Middle School, Northview Middle School, Crestview, Oseo Education Center, and the Building a Better Future II planning totaling $60 million. There will, there will be, there will also be $12.8 million in categorical projects. Brooklyn Middle School will begin a $13.8 million LTFM renovation with work throughout the facility. Northview Middle School will finish the deferred maintenance that remains in the two-story portion of the building for the, for an estimated $10 million. Crestview will begin an $11 million LTFM renovation throughout the entire facility. Oseo Education Center and Rush Creek will, will begin long-term facility maintenance renovations on the mechanical systems throughout the building. In addition to these construction projects, the LTFM plan includes design development projects for Maple Grove Senior High, system-wide security upgrades, flex room design, media center, and media center designs. These major innovations have LTFM components that will be planned with the development work if the voters approve the work of the Building a Better Future II initiative. That's the quick run-through, and I think I'm going to turn it over to John for the next steps.
We'll turn it back if there are any questions.
Absolutely. Let's entertain a motion to approve the long-term facilities maintenance 10-year plan, and then we can discuss. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Tanya Simons. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sarah Mitchell. And discussion or questions?
So, so again, we've talked about this quite a bit, and we've even talked about it as part of the Building a Better Future discussions as well in terms of accelerating the LTFM portions while things are opened up, if we do pass that bond and have the opportunity to add the capacity and add the different projects there. And just pointing out, you know, you see the words renovate, restore, because that's what the dollars are limited to do. So it's always a good reminder, I think, when we're clear that we, there's legislative directives on what we can use our dollars for. In this particular fund, we can only replace, that we can't use this fund to add capacity or to do new things, which is- which is part of the bond discussion that we've had in the past. So I think it's worth noting that again. So appreciate all of the detail and the, you know, again, the excellence of the ten-year planning, the ensuring that our facilities are well-maintained, that we do have that, that opportunity to keep them to the level that we need them to be at for all of our scholars through the great planning that the team does in execution. So thank you.
Anyone else? I just want to thank Dale once again. Every year, I'm excited to see which projects we're going to tackle and how, how they progressed. And I feel like almost every time you come under, under budget. I know that'll be really hard now with all the inflation, but I appreciate you. Thank you. All right, with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes six to zero.
Chair Mosquita Jones, can I always, can I add, always on time?
Yes.
And always at a higher level of quality than we expect.
Yes.
It's the trifecta.
You have some amazing people in this district. All right, our final action item is Gifts to the District. Is there a motion to approve Gifts to the District totaling seventy five thousand, seventy five dollars and sixty six cents? I feel like it should have been seventy five cents just to keep it going. Is there a motion to approve those gifts?
So moved.
Is there a motion by Heather Douglas? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Thomas Brooks. Any discussion? Thank you, thank you, thank you. All opposed, say, I mean, I'm sorry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes six to zero. At this time, the board will be taking a brief recess and then reconvene in the foreign room for a closed session. This session will be closed pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero three for labor negotiations with kid stop instructors, R Ns, and L PNs, educational support professionals, and administrative support professionals. Is there a motion to recess the regular meeting for ten minutes and reconvene in the foreign room for a closed session?
So moved.
Moved by Tanya Simons. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Sarah Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes six to zero. This meeting is recessed at eight twenty five P M. And the school board, we will be entering negotiations in ten minutes.